Got it. All right, we're close enough. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to a quarter. Nathan, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember McPherson.
Here.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Council President Bruce.
Here.
Mayor Steer.
Here. And if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, I'm going to interest you, Michelle Covert. We brought her on. She's our Economic Development Administrator. Big, long title. So she is now drinking from the proverbial fire hose, learning all things Kuna, and doing a pretty good job, I think. So welcome, Michelle. First item is the consent agenda. Questions or comments?
Councilmember Biggs. Do you have any? I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion's made in the seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you pull the council, please?
Council President Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
And that motion carries. That takes us to public comment. I have Michael Rocco signed up. You may have the floor, sir, if you would state your name and address.
Michael Rocco, 1286 East Forty-Earth Street in Kuna, Idaho, 83634. We've had some robust, not we, this council has had some robust discussions over the last three or four council meetings over the budget. And I've noticed over the last couple of months, I'm actually receiving emails notifying us of when the mayor's going to have Popsicle Day and, you know, various different notifications. So I'm wondering, Mayor, if we could have, make sure that there's a notification that goes out to the public that I've been receiving via email, letting them know of the, I think it's the 19th of the public meeting with the budget. And so I'm wondering if that's possible, because we really haven't had any citizen, hardly any citizens here, as all of this robust discussion's been going on with the budget. And I think it's important that we make every effort to bring the public out to work on the budget. The other thing is, I guess, I know it's a little early, but I would, I'm curious to see, you allocated $20,000 in overtime for, I guess it was called the Hell's Angel, for the law enforcement. And I know it's real early. I'm just curious to see, you know, was all the $20,000 expended? Do we anticipate that all $20,000 was expended? And also, I don't think that anybody had the foresight to know that Idaho Department of Transportation was going to be doing the roadwork on the 69. I don't know how that affected the distribution of law enforcement also. So those are just some of the questions. I don't know if I can get answers, but thank you.
Well, that's a good point. I think sometimes I think that when we get our tax sheets in, that that budget hearing is advertised on there, but then I don't think about the fact that people that are renting don't get those sheets. So that's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up. And as far as I know, I don't believe that we used any of the... Chief?
Mayor, councilmembers, chief Mike Tuzko, City of Kuna, 793 West Fourth Street. The way, from what I'm seeing right now, it doesn't look like we had to use any of the $20,000 in contingency fees. We did have overtime costs, but I believe I was able to budget that through our normal budget. And then we had agencies, we had Star Police, Eagle Police, Ada County Unincorporated deputies, a lot of different people up here. But I don't think I, I would say that I probably don't have to use any of it. That was a safety measure, just in case, which I think is the right thing to do and the smart thing to do. So, thank you.
Good. Thanks, Chief. And I didn't have anybody else signed up. Was there anybody else who wished to address the council? All right. Okay, yeah, if you want to sign the sheet here. Okay, then if you would just state your name and address for the record, and you may have the floor.
My name is Maxime Hutchinson. I live at 1442 West Hayfield Court, Kuna, Idaho, 83634. This past weekend was Kuna Days. My street, Hayfield Court subdivision was completely blocked off. I could not get out of my house at all. There are only two exits, and I had to yell at the attendants to let me out, because they referred to, "Oh, isn't there a third exit?" And I said, "Well, no, there isn't a third exit." So I wanted to know, excuse me, is there any sort of way we could have a better understanding of when the parade, where the parade is going to go? Because it was really challenging to get out, and I had to go help my friends move from Boise out to Kuna, and it was just a challenge.
Okay, yeah, if you would, contact the Kuna Chamber. They're the ones that work with ACHD on those road closures, because that's their event. But let them know, and then we will follow up to work and see what we can do, because I know there were some other issues, so we'll be looking into that. But thank you. Anybody else? Okay. That takes us to public hearings. This was consideration to approve case number 2409 AN and 2506 S was tabled from July 15. The public hearing was closed, and so the city council can return to deliberation on that with the information that was requested and received. Did you want Troy to, did you want Troy to come up and ask or answer any questions?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, Troy, if you would, yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Troy B. Hunan, Senior Planner, Development Services Department. So at the conclusion of the meeting where this was held the first time in July, the request from the council was to secure a letter from the Kuna Rural Fire District and also that of an updated letter from the Kuna School District. Before I left that evening, I sent emails, and they responded in kind. By the time I got to my desk the next morning, they had both, at least responded to my email, the Kuna Fire District actually had provided the comments. So those are actually in your packet. And the Kuna School District letter is on page 191 of 455, and the Kuna Rural Fire District letter is on page 192 of 455. So beyond that, there's...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm open for any questions you might have.
I think that's it, Troy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don't want you getting tired standing there.
The school district used the exact same letter. It got pretty much, they just changed the number from 177 to 100.
Yeah.
It was designed by a different person.
Yeah, it was updated reflecting the number of homes that are requested.
Yeah, I think, you know, like I said, my problem is having an actual capacity plan for the schools, knowing that we're not going to approve and overwhelm them, or if they are contributing to mitigating the impacts of schools, is it actually adding capacity? And that's where I think we discussed last time. But when you have each agency saying that they can service it, it puts us in a position as well.
Yep, you're right. I mean, many times we've been here when the school district has said, "We can't, we can't, we can't," because of the capacity issues. We even had those, one where they had the charts with all the red markings. But in this case, the, I mean, good on the developer. They, you know, definitely doing what the school district asked, but...
I mean, we have a, you know, you have people that are showing up building their own schools, developers are contributing to schools, so they're trying to make, you know, ease the impact of the schools. I would just like to see for the future what that looks like and how we're actually adding capacity to the schools. I know saying that we're just waiting on a bond is, you can't, we can't continue to use that when we don't know if a bond will pass or not, so that's kind of where I'm at. I think with all the agencies saying yes, I don't necessarily know that we have a legal avenue to deny it. What's your thought?
Same. I agree. We got what we had in question, and it was in favor of, so I don't see how we can say no.
Twice.
Want to make a motion, or?
I'd make a motion to approve case 24-09 AN and 25-06 S.
Second. Motion's made in the seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B, case number 2502 CPF for Valor Social Club.
Good evening once again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Troy B. Hunan, Kuna Development Services Department. The application before you this evening requests a combined preliminary and final plat for approximately 335 acres that are already in the city of Kuna. In fact, it's a smaller part of the Greater Falcon Crest planned unit development that was approved by most of this council in 2019. The application is currently zoned R6 and R12, and they are requesting the combined preliminary plat and final plat approval in order to consolidate multiple remnant parcels that have been created over the years with the development of the overall site. As you might be aware, the total site is 1,078 plus or minus 20 acres, so it's considerable in size. This is basically a cleanup effort. They will be taking all of these remnant pieces, and they will be consolidating them into five new parcels. At a future time, those five parcels will come in for their own development requests, but this is not, this is not geared towards that. This is just more of a cleanup effort. This site is located near the northeast corner of the section of Cloverdale and Kuna Roads. Earlier this year, in May in fact, the commission heard this request, and they voted to recommend approval to the council. That approval is on page 344 of 455 of your packet. Staff has reviewed the proposed combo plats for compliance with Kuna City Code and Idaho State statutes, and the Kuna Comprehensive Plan, and also the recorded development agreement, and the conditions of approval of that approval, that initial approval back in 2019. And staff recommends that the applicant be subject and proposed to the recommended conditions outlined in staff's memo, should the council approve this request. Now Caleb Leclair from the applicant's engineer is here to make a presentation and to answer any questions the council has, and I'll also be right here, so.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. Very good.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if the applicant would like to?
Thank you, Mayor's Councilman. My name is Caleb Leclair. I'm with JUB Engineers. Work address is 2760 West Excursion Lane, Meridian, Idaho. Troy characterized it very well, and we really appreciate Troy's help through this process. This is really just a cleanup. As he said, there's been a number of remnant parcels created through various final plats that have been recorded over the property, and so we're trying to consolidate some of those, as well as better define the golf course property, separate from the future development area that's already been preprogrammed with the development agreement. So that's the purpose of this combination plat. I don't really have anything else to add. I'll answer questions if you have them.
Okay. Very good. Questions for Caleb?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing, and Kim Ashmore, if you would like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and council. My name's Kim Ashmore. I live at 11204 South Salus Way, Kuna, Idaho, which is part of the Valor Golf Course Falcon Crest Social Club. I came from Washington. I know that's a swear word in Idaho, but I'm a good Washingtonian, and now I'm an Idaho resident. Wife and I moved here. We've been here 36 days, and we moved here mainly because of our grandkids. But I plan on playing a lot of golf out there, which I have been doing, and I do approve and support this decision you're about to make, but I ask that you consider the impact to the main entrance to Valor, the golf course, River Six Restaurant, Medallion, Medallion Greens. Right now, that's our only access to that entire development and the golf course. Adding 335 acres of parcels and houses and not considering another entrance to this golf course or to Medallion or these developments, there's a lot of kids out there playing Cadet and Freedom Golf Course, and there's crossings on Tersil. If you've been out there lately, there's probably more trucks going down Tersil Drive than there are residents. It's crazy how much development. I support development. That's good for the community out there. It's good for the city of Kuna. But if you haven't done a traffic impact analysis and looked at the traffic that could be added to that entrance, Trilogy has a separate entrance, plus the entrance that we all use to get to the golf course and to our houses. So please consider a TIA if you can, or a traffic study, or in the future, when these developers come to you with plans, remember that we need another access out there, maybe off of Kuna Road, maybe the backside of Falcon Crest Golf Course. We just need not to have one entrance to all that development. I do support it. I want more houses, more members. The golf course, as you've probably heard, is going private in about three years, so we need members to come in and pay those fees and make that golf course even better than it is. So that's all I have. If you have any questions of me?
Questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Then I have Doug Davy.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Doug Davy. Live out in the Valor Community, 11156 South Yeoman Place. Been there about a year now. Similar to what Kim just indicated, I have no problems at all with the development. Been aware of the plans, they're going to be developing that full area, but again, ingress egress is important, and I think as part of when they go forward in getting final roads and lot lines and everything else, the northeast corner of the development area where it goes out over to Five Mile Road, I've seen plans with a stub of a road going out that way, but that should be a primary gated entrance into the community. It's about three eighths of a mile off from the existing paved section of Five Mile Road to the north off of Hubbard, and so it's a great addition, another access point from another direction that will dramatically reduce, should dramatically reduce the traffic coming through the community. So I support it, but I hope that will be seriously looked at as a requirement of the future development for an ingress egress, key operating gate at that location. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Questions?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And that's all I have, signed up to testify. Is there anybody else who wishes to testify in this matter? All right, very good. And Caleb, if you would like to address the, it sounds like the access concern is the...
Absolutely. Caleb Leclair, JUB Engineers, 2760 West Excursion Lane, Meridian. So again, this application really doesn't have to do with any development occurring at this time. There will be future applications that deal with actual future plating of these master parcels, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about the specifics of access then. I will say that what is currently ongoing is extension of Tercel Drive, as well as Five Mile Road down to Kuna Road. So the developer is actively constructing those road improvements with ACHD approval to provide a second means of ingress and egress to the master Falcon Crest development. So that is ongoing, should be finished, I believe, before the end of the year, is what I understand, so.
Okay. Further questions? Okay? All right.
Anyone else love to testify, Mr. Mayor? Is that everyone?
That was it, yes.
I move we close evidence presentation and move to deliberation.
Second. Motion's made in the seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you guys have anything, any questions or concerns?
I saw, I'm actually been driven by there a couple times, and I've seen some of the widening improvements on Cloverdale, which is mentioned in the ACHD report. It sounds like the Tercel improvements will be coming. So I don't have anything additional to say on that. That's the biggest, that's the biggest hangup with this, was that, was that, but...
And we'll see the actual project that'll come before us in a different application. So they'll do traffic studies, impact studies.
As far as the study goes, right, you have to, for ACHD, it has to trigger, there has to be a certain amount of ad of line to go to $1,000 vehicles per day, and then there's a table on there when it hits that, it will hit the, which it will happen, it will happen at some point in this.
Okay. I move we approve case number 25-02 CPF.
Second. Motion's made in the seconded for approval for case number 2502 CPF, and I'm assuming that includes with staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations.
Second stands. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Consideration to approve case 2501 AN and 2502-S Marina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Marina Lundee, Planner, Kuna Development Services Department. The application before you this evening requests annexation and subdivision approval for approximately 5.98 acres with a proposed zone of C1 neighborhood commercial, and to subdivide the site into seven commercial lots and one common lot. The site is located at the northwest corner of North Ten Mile Road and West Deer Flat Road. Staff has reviewed the proposed annexation and preplat for compliance with Kuna City Code, Idaho statutes 50-222, 67-65, and the Kuna Comprehensive Plan. And should the council approve the application, staff recommends the applicant be subject to the proposed recommended conditions as outlined in the staff report. I'll be here for any questions you have about the application, and the applicant is present tonight and has prepared a presentation.
Okay. Any questions for Marina?
No.
Not at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, the applicant would like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I appreciate that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Glenn Walker. My address is 1831 East Overland Road in Meridian, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding the proposed Crimson Square subdivision slash development. I'm here today on behalf of the owners to respectfully request your approval for the following entitlements, the annexation and zoning preliminary plat approval and design review. Crimson Square is located at the northwest corner of North Ten Mile Road and West Deer Flat Road. The project site consists of approximately 5.98 acres currently designed, designated as vacant agricultural land within the rural urban transition zoning district. Our proposal includes annexing the property into the city of Kuna, rezoning the parcel to a C1 neighborhood commercial in alignment with the city's future land use map, subdividing the land into seven buildable lots and one common lot, and beginning the design review The property is rounded by existing commercial and residential zoning to the north, is zoned C1. East is zoned R6, and south and west is zoned C1. The project aligns with the city of Kuna's comprehensive plan, which designates this area as commercial on the future land use map. Specifically, this development supports the following goals and objectives. Goal number one, creating a vibrant and economically diverse community, promote business creation, expansion, and relocation, encourage shovel-ready commercial parcels with adequate infrastructure. And then goal number two is enhancing the quality and character of the commercial development around that area, and support connected, well-designed commercial areas for the community. Objective number three is to support connected wider sidewalks and pathways, and preliminary plat, we're proposing 10-foot sidewalks along Ten Mile and West Deer Flat for enhanced pedestrian experience, a designated pedestrian crossing at the Ten Mile Road entrance, a transition from existing 5-foot to 10-foot wide sidewalks, landscapes setbacks of 10 feet for plants taller than 3 feet near key entrances, and internal private streets and lot access designed in accordance with the ACHD and city standards. We do, we have received the staff report, and we agree with staff recommendations and conditions of approval, which include coordination with ACHD and city staff on access easements, traffic improvements, and lighting, compliance with Kuna City Codes for fencing, landscaping, signage, and utility installation, and a commitment to maintain landscaping in a healthy condition year-round, and also ensuring that all future building projects within the development will go through individual design review for the city to review it. In closing, we understand that this development will continue to set a foundation for future commercial activity in this growing area of Kuna. The owners are committed to delivering a high-quality, thoughtfully designed project that aligns with the city's long-term visions and the needs of the surrounding residents. On behalf of the applicant and the owners, I want to thank the mayor, city council members, planning, zoning commissioners, and city staff for their time and review and consideration of the project called Crimson Square. We respectively request your approval of the annexation, preliminary plat, and the design review entitlements, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Walker?
Lot at this time.
All right.
Thank you very much.
And I didn't have anybody sign up to testify in this matter. Is there somebody who wishes to testify who didn't get a chance to sign up?
I'll be on the record twice tonight.
It's my first meeting, so...
That's good.
Might as well jump in with both feet.
Well, I live right there, so...
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Maxine Hutchinson. I live at 1442 West Hayfield Court, Cuna, Idaho. Per Crimson Point area, how would this development impact the road of Ten Mile? I mean, I know there's a project for a roundabout right out Deer Flat and Ten Mile. I want to know how it's going to impact our ability to leave the neighborhood and what the building is going to look like. I just want to, I'm just curious as to what it looks like.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure that they have any conceptual's yet on the... Was there anybody else who wished to testify in this matter that didn't sign up? All right. Well, if you want to step back up, you may do so, sir. Mr. Walker?
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have mentioned that we will be going through design review, so when we do design the buildings, the city staff will have input on the design of the buildings, so once the design of the buildings are at that point, we will be going through the design review portion, which obviously the city council, or the city staff will have input on that. And as far as access around the site, we feel that this is, really has pretty limited impact on the surrounding residential that's next to us, and also, also pretty minimal impact on the commercial site that's around us as well. And as you know, they're proposing to do that roundabout there at the corner of Ten Mile, and so, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any questions? All right, very good. And that is all I have signed up to testify.
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Lundie.
Okay.
On that Ten Mile, ACHD has, well, hold on, let me look. Actually, never mind. I found it, thank you.
Okay.
I don't have anything further. I move we close evidence presentation and move to deliberation.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, I think the best part for me is getting sidewalks in along that area. That's always been scary for getting up across from Deer Flat and then also Ten Mile. It's just a bad place for pedestrians, which is why we put the crosswalk down at Crenshaw there was to help alleviate that, but people that live on this end of the Crimson Point development don't want to walk all the way down there and then all the way back, so that, for me, that's the best part, is the safety factor of getting that completed.
I had to compare this, you know, this is kind of like a very minor scale compared to the Meridian and Deer Flat corner, northwest corner.
Oh, yeah.
Traffic for this should be much better than that, because if there's a traffic circle there, eventually, you can pull out of that and then it's getting to the traffic circle turn right, and you don't have that same luxury at Meridian Road.
Yeah.
But, much-needed commercial, we definitely are hurting for commercial in town. Pretty small-scale project.
And it's good to fill in for, for that area, so, fits the comp plan and everything else, so, win-win.
Going to miss all those weeds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll see, you know, they'll come forward with what it's actually going to look like, and we'll get more of the studies that we'll need to see. You always worry about having commercial there on that intersection, what it's going to do, but they'll be required to build out all of those, those roadways there, which will make it move faster, so. I don't have anything else, I'll stand for a motion.
I would move we approve case number 25-01AN and 2502S with the conditions listed in the document.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Consideration to approve case number 2501-CPF Marina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Marina Lundie, Planner, Cuna Development Services Department. The application before you this evening requests combination plat approval to subdivide Lot One of the Paul Bunyan Plaza subdivision, which is approximately 0.96 acres already zoned C2 area commercial. The west side of the lot will be for Mo Bettas' fast-food restaurant, and the east side will be for a Take Five oil change facility, both of which have design review approval. The site is located at 1460 East Deer Flat Road, near the intersection of North Meridian and East Deer Flat. Staff has reviewed the proposed pre-plat for compliance with Cuna City Code Idaho statutes 50-13, 67-65, and the Cuna Comprehensive Plan, and should the council approve the application, staff recommends the applicant be subject to the recommended conditions as outlined in the staff report. I'll be here for any questions you have, and the applicant is present tonight as well.
Okay, questions for Marina?
No, thank you.
All right, and if the applicant would like to step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Jeff likes 1119 East State Street, Eagle, Idaho 83616. We have really nothing other to say. We appreciate staff and their hard work on it. Stand for any questions.
Okay, question?
No, I know he took care of a lot of stuff through planning and zoning. They went back and forth with the, with some of the exit issues, and so, I do not at this time.
What is Mo Bettas?
Excuse me?
Hawaiian barbecue?
Yeah. It's good, it's great.
Must be good, we're getting on ruling.
Yeah.
All right, I guess that's all we have.
Thank you, thank you.
And again, this is a public hearing. I didn't have anybody sign up to testify. Is there somebody who wishes to testify in this matter that didn't get a chance? All right, seeing none.
I move we close evidence presentation and move to deliberation.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Let's just finish out the rest of that corner development that's been going on, so. I move we approve case number 25-01-CPF with staff report, staff recommendations.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item 7A, consideration to approve ordinance number 25-18, and ordinance of the city council of Cuna, Idaho, amending section four of chapter one, title eight, and Cuna City Code to make any violation of title eight, chapter one punishable by an administrative citation and directing the city clerk and providing an effective date.
I move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-18.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move we approve case, ordinance 2025-18.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries.
I move we approve the summary publication of ordinance 2025-18.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to ordinances. Item 8A, consideration to approve ordinance 2025-16, a municipal annexation and zoning ordinance of the city council, the city of Cuna, making certain findings and declaration of authority and annexing certain real property to wit Ada County assessor's parcel number S2008336002 owned by Star Acres Properties within the unincorporated area of Ada County, Idaho, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Cuna into the city of Cuna, Idaho, and establishing the zoning classifications of said real property, and directing the city engineer and the city clerk and providing an effective date.
I move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-16.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move we approve ordinance 2025-16.
Second.
Motion is made in second for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Consideration to approve ordinance 2025-17, and ordinance excluding certain real property known as parcel number S1302233715, currently situated in the city of Cuna, Idaho, from the city of Cuna back into the unincorporated area of Ada County, reverting the zoning classification of said real property, directing the copies of the ordinance be filed by law and providing an effective date.
I move we waive three readings, ordinance 2025-17.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move we approve ordinance 2025-17.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Consideration to approve ordinance 2025-19, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cuna, making certain findings and enlarging the boundaries of the Cuna Municipal Irrigation System by the inclusion of Ada County Assessor's Noel T. Hudden and Misty D. Hudden, and declaring water rights pertinent thereto are pooled for delivery purposes, and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance as provided by law, and directing the city engineer to provide notification of this ordinance to the Boise, Cuna Irrigation District, the owners, and update the irrigation system map, and providing an effective date.
I just wanted to say thank you to our, Mr. Adam over here for helping with that one.
Yes, that was a long time, that was a tough deal to get through.
It was. I move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-19.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move we approve ordinance 2025-19.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Consideration to approve ordinance 2025-20, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cuna, making certain findings and enlarging the boundaries of the Cuna Municipal Irrigation System by the inclusion of Ada County Assessor's Linder Land LLC, and declaring water rights pertinent thereto are pooled for delivery purposes, and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance as provided by law, and directing the city engineer to provide the notice of this ordinance to the Boise, Cuna Irrigation District, the owners, and update the irrigation system map, and providing an effective date.
I move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-20.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move we approve ordinance 2025-20.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. I believe that's all we have for the evening. Is there anything that council wants to announce, or staff, or anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just call out that we spoke of this, Mr. Don Carlock, who is a former city councilman, former fire commissioner, and also, he ran the American Legion post for several years, passed away a couple weeks ago, and very sad, but he's been a very big part of this community.
He was. He also was involved in Boise State, and probably a whole bunch of other things that we...
Booster club at the high school, I mean, he was very involved.
He was a, I was a fire commissioner when he was a fire commissioner, was also a firefighter when he was a fire commissioner, so there was an overlap there, but, great guy, did a lot of work for his community, really cared, and certainly won't be missed, was sad to hear of that. And a great family also. Anything else?
It was good to see all the folks come out for Cuna Days, you know, it was good to have the people out. Parade was good.
Parade was good.
There was always some hiccups, but overall, it was...
It was interesting that ITD's timing on doing chip seal for Cuna Days was, I don't even know how you get around that, but it worked out, I guess, so, I didn't hear a lot of problems with that one, so, I guess it was good, just slowed everybody down leaving town, so.
Well, that, it looks like they added some more water trucks also, because it hosed all the kids down at the end.
Yes, there was plenty of water.
And the older folks were hitting, hitting for cover. So, you had kids running to the water, the older folks running away, so.
That new truck that ACHD owns dumped some water.
I have one question.
What thing?
Yeah, yeah. I have to be getting it out. I heard there is this obstacle of cleaning the streets up after the parade. I mean, there are candy, you all, wherever you are, somebody is drawing out the broken ...
Oh, yeah.
And they were just, we were everywhere on the street. So, is that the chamber that has to...
The chamber, and then, I don't know if ACHD does anything involved with that or not, they could have used that water truck to wash everything down, but, yeah, I don't, the chamber is actually in charge of the event, so they would be the, they would be the lead on that.
Yeah. I just, just give us...
I get yelled at a lot that weekend, like, wasn't me. But that's okay. That's why, that's why I signed up for this job I get, so, anyway. All right, well, that's all I have, and thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.